Both of you, thank you so much for coming to William Week's Zone Five School Board Endorsement Interview. Um, just a quick couple of reminders before we get started. Sorry, I have to pull my document up. So we are going to just over the next forty-five minutes, an hour or so, get to attempt to know both of you. We don't guarantee equal time. Um, so if one of you gives an answer that we are particularly compelled to follow up on, we might follow up on that for a little bit, but that doesn't really indicate who we're going to endorse. It's just, yeah, no, no way indicates who we like the best. And it's not really structured like a debate, but um, more than happy to have you guys riff off of each other. If, you know, there's something where you want to interject, just let us know. Um, and we might have to cut you off with, you know, time, but I don't really think that's too big of a deal with two people. Um, so to start, I just love a two-minute intro, just name, um, current occupation, what experience you might have with public service, and then um, just kind of a why Portland School Board statement. Um, and Jorge, we can start with you.
Yeah, well, thanks for having me. Uh, so my name is Jorge Sanz Batista. Um, long name. I usually make sure to tell folks about the Batista Park because a lot of folks uh, tend to think it's Batista with the actor. Um, I am currently a student right now at McDaniel High School off Eighty Second Avenue. I was born and raised here in Portland. I'm a Portland native. Uh, I'm, I'm in the Cully neighborhood, so northeast. And my, so my family is from, is from Mexico. They immigrated, my mom and sister immigrated here to the United States in the early two thousands. Uh, really for that American dream of better opportunities, really, um, was really like the key thing that they really focused on. Uh, but also for public education. Uh, my mom ended uh, school in middle school. Uh, due to barriers there in Mexico, you kind of had to pay for education, pay for food, uniforms, a lot of barriers. Uh, and so my mom didn't want that, the same thing for my sister. Uh, and so they came here in the early two thousands to Oregon uh, for their next home. Uh, but yeah, I really just, you know, wanted to have that education that she never got to make sure that my sister and later me, when I was born here, uh, to also get the same uh, public education. Uh, so we both, both of us uh, went to Wrigley Elementary off Prescott. We went to Belmont Middle School off Fremont, and now um, she graduated in twenty sixteen, graduated from PSU in twenty twenty, and I'm following her footsteps, you could say, uh, graduating this May. Um, and hopefully going to PSU to go to political science. Public policy is really my expertise area. Uh, other than that, I'm a community organizer too, so I've done a lot of local and statewide work, uh, going from racial justice, uh, racial justice, transportation, housing, um, education, a bunch of, uh, a bunch of issues. Uh, and for occupation, I work at Portland Parks and Recreation for the city of Portland. I am a recreation associate, so I've been there for about three to four years. I love my job. I get to work with a lot of um, K through twelve people, a lot of, a lot of students, especially elementary and middle schoolers, which has been a big thing. Um, kind of, they call me like Mr. Jorge, or like, really like the mentor to them about just everything. Um, yeah, that's kind of what I've um, been doing. I go a lot, I'm some kind of like spread around. I go, I'm in community centers and parks in east and southeast Portland, so really where I'm needed and yeah, really just like engaging uh, with recreation when it comes to kids, but also working with diverse communities um, in Portland.
Great. Alright, um, my name is Virginia LaForte, and I am a PPS parent. I am a longtime advocate for students, and uh, I make a living as a strategist. And I've spent the last about thirteen years or so affecting real systemic and policy change within PPS. And what I've learned through doing this is that if you want to change the system, you need to understand it. You need to be very comfortable challenging it, and then you have to stick around long enough to see things through. And um, I really believe that our collective success as a city moving forward is with our students. Uh, PPS needs to be working for every student, and I am here because I am willing to work for that. Um, we have a five alarm fire. I feel like every day I open the newspaper, Amalama Week, and I'm like, okay, another problem, another problem, another problem. You know, kind of chronic absenteeism, literacy gaps, a crumbling infrastructure, which I have been shouting from the rooftops about for thirteen years. And um, I'm extremely concerned with where we're headed, where we're at as a district. Um, but I have um, a long track record of affecting uh, real change within PPS. Um, millions of dollars in change. You know, a couple of examples um, are um, childhood lead advocacy that I started twelve years ago after discovering um, lead-based paint and dust uh, contaminating my local elementary school. Um, I filed a complaint with OHA, which acts on behalf of the EPA in Oregon, and started going after PPS to get serious about the changes, and you know, it was repeatedly ignored, ignored, ignored.
Which elementary school is that?
Uh, this was Alameda. Um, it was the worst school in the district, PPS admitted finally, um, in terms of lead paint contamination because of the structure of the building. It's all wood siding, and it was, I think it was the oldest wood building in the district at the time. And um, it was scary. And um, what ended up happening is it was declared a hazmat area finally. And as a result of that, it was included, um, it was actually part of the impetus for including a hundred and fifteen million dollars for environmental health and safety improvements in the twenty seventeen bond, so I'm really proud of that. Um, in addition, um, Harriet Tubman Middle School uh, was getting ready to reopen in two thousand eighteen. Um, we knew that I five, the I five expansion was on the table, but PPS was rushing to get the school reopened. Definitely there was a rush to get a reopen. The children in that area needed the middle school. They had been advocating for it for a long time. But the goal was to get the doors open and keep them safe at the same time. So uh, my advocacy led to the creation of the Environmental Technical Advisory Committee for Harriet Tubman Middle School. And if you're familiar with it, um, we uh, had PSU conduct the air quality study, which is used uh, for a lot of like the highway safety stuff that you read right now, um, that confirmed what we knew, that the air was toxic. I have four year requests with numerous complaints from the previous students at the school. They were sick. And um, and um, I'm really proud that that resulted in ten million dollars being allocated for the air filtration on top, on top of the school. And um, I have been involved in redirecting funds um, to the classrooms, specifically tag funds that were um, being returned to the central office, to the general fund that weren't being used particularly at Title One schools. Got that policy changed, and right now, as you're probably aware, I'm right in the middle of the Grand Bowl uh, field lighting project. We just submitted our, um, for the first time ever, um, a conditional use application for field lights at the bowl. And I feel like that is so important. It's not just an athletic thing, it is a community thing for our students. We have, our students, especially the junior athletes, are missing enough school to qualify them as chronically absent. We have a hundred-member pep band as well, and they're traveling for home games. But there's just a sense of community that our coalition really wants for those students. They don't have that place to come together, you know, in the evenings, on the weekends. So I'm really excited. Um, we have neighborhood support that we've worked really hard for. We really, we really knocked down some barriers, and there'll be a public hearing in May that I'm really excited about. Um, I think I covered, I think I covered a lot.
Yeah, Jorge, I'd love to hear a little bit about your motivation for why school board. I think, I don't know, there was like too much elaboration there, but I'd love for you to get a chance to elaborate a little bit more on that.
Yeah, I mean, so I really, there's a lot of reasons to why. Uh, really, my motivation has been bringing my lived student experience. Uh, so I've been in PPS for the past twelve years of my life. Uh, and really, you know, sometimes uh, now that I'm a senior, you know, like, moving on to my, the next chapter in my life, sometimes I would go to my elementary and middle schools, you know, to see like, visit my former teachers. Most of them are gone. Uh, but really like see the building, see like if anyone, really just kind of get that, like going through memory lane, you could say. And when I go visit my elementary and middle school, I would see um, really the same, same things really. Uh, you know, like a crumbling infrastructure, uh, a lot of issues within the building. Um, teachers and staff, you know, being more overwhelmed more than ever. And then there's like student issues with them not being as engaged with curriculum, with them dealing with mental health. And then there's also the technology usage with phones, um, which has been a big thing in the coming years. Uh, and just kind of seeing like, okay, um, in the past decade or so, like everything has pretty much been the same or has gone worse since then, uh, has really been my key motivation to bring like, okay, I have the experience. I know the challenges, and the person that's going to know the most about what students are facing is going to be the student. Uh, so really that kind of has been my main motivation to, you know, like running to the board, um, running um, for the board to bring, you know, like bring that expertise, bring that, um, those challenges and experience and, you know, pop, bring solutions to it. Um, but from that also, I have been involved in social justice since twenty seventeen, uh, when gentrification and rent spikes hit my neighborhood in Cully. Uh, and that was when corporations and big profit folks came into my neighborhood, really wanted to like, change a lot of apartment complexes, and it was about a classroom filled of students, including me, um, that were being impacted by this change of, uh, really all were immigrants or uh, or identified as BIPOC. And that was kind of my main moment that I realized that a lot of things were about, um, how a lot of rich, uh, rich folks and corporations had a key role in working families in underserved communities. Uh, that kind of led me to really like getting involved in social justice in general too. Um, and then from there, it kind of led me to doing like all of this, doing all this incredible social justice work that I've been doing. Um, but also just, you know, kind of just seeing how everything is currently, with the current climate, uh, with political climate. You know, we have issues at the federal level with federal funds, we have state with, you know, deciding on whether to fully fund education. And we have here at a local level where, you know, we have a new city government, um, a lot of new elected leaders who need, um, you know, a new collaboration with, with folks.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so just a quick follow-up to that. I know that the board has traditionally had kind of a student representative, you know, to kind of air out that perspective. Why do you feel that that, you know, maybe isn't enough? Or, you know, why is the, like, you know, why isn't that position?
Yeah, the currently how it is with PPS, uh, you know, like you said, there's one student who serves as a student representative or student director, which is more of an advisory role. Um, you know, they don't really have a say in policies. Um, they don't really do a lot of like important, um, importance of like what a regular school board member would do. Um, you know, one person, one student who's in high school representing over forty-four thousand students um, district-wide is kind of, you know, an issue that they can't really accomplish a lot when they have a little space. And so, you know, as running for school board seat, you get influence. You get a vote in policy matters where it affects over four thousand staff members, where, you know, affects over forty-four thousand students in a bunch of schools which are also community hubs. Um, you know, really being a school board member, um, brings a lot, you know, like a lot of abilities and a lot of things that you could do. Um, you know, it doesn't really all have to be regarding, you know, like educational policies, curriculum, student absenteeism, um, and like evaluating the superintendent and like, you know, locating funds. But school board, you can also do a bunch of other things through that too. Uh, we've seen like with local school board members, you know, do other actions through like, you know, climate justice, um, through, you know, like, um, making our, our school buildings and electrifying our buses, with school board members being a supportive housing projects, especially in north and northeast Portland, um, to, you know, bring communities back together, especially in the Jefferson Hub area, um, and as well as in the Roosevelt. Um, so really kind of seeing like, you know, you could do a lot of things, and you know, being in that elected position gives you a lot of new pathways and new opportunities.
Sure. Virginia, I'd love to hear from you just to start outlining kind of your top priorities for, you know, the first year or first two years on this board, like what you kind of are hoping to bring to the table and, you know, accomplish in the school board role and how you understand that role.
Sure. So, you know, for, in my mind, the school board role, you know, it's a governance position. It's the board's job to, um, you know, hire and fire the superintendent, hopefully not fire, hopefully just hire. And also to set policy and a vision for the district. And for me, right out of the gate, my three key focuses would be how we're going to tackle chronic absenteeism. We have, you know, forty percent of our students, give or take a couple percentage points, that are um, missing, you know, ten percent or more of their school days. That's a lot. We have, um, you know, at the bottom for reading and math, we have, you know, again, forty percent of our students, give or take a few in the state of Oregon, that are not reading um, at grade level. That is significant. And then we've got our infrastructure. And I'm trying to like repeat myself from earlier, but those are the three lanes for me that I see as the fires that we need to focus on and the fires that we need to put out. And I was thinking about this, I've been thinking about this all week, and especially on the drive over here, that I, I feel like I'm a strat, you know, I'm a strategist for a living. You know, it's my job is to look at the big picture and feel how to, you know, figure out how to connect it with, you know, all, all the individuals down here. And at PPS, it made me wonder just how siloed it is internally. Because, you know, we're not, we're not on the inside. We don't know all of the details of the inner workings. We have a general idea. But that is a, a strategic look at those problems, and how each lane can help solve those problems is really important. I've had a couple of conversations this week, um, around the, um, around chronic absenteeism and how it links to the K through three literacy rates. And it was interesting because the two people that I talked to who would know, one is a partner, uh, wraparound services partner with PPS, you know, helping historically underserved students with their K through three reading, with high dose tutoring, all that good stuff, and PPS staff. And I asked them point blank, why, why are kids chronically absent in K through, where are the kids? That's what I wanted to know. High school, it's a little bit of a different question, right? Where are the kids? And they didn't really know. And, um, but there were, it wasn't for lack of wanting to know. It's just not necessarily as, you know, their jobs are defined, not their, not their job to figure it out. It's how to implement the grants, right? It's how to get them from point A to point B with transportation. All I could think of is like, there's just going to be somebody above here looking at grants, looking at transportation, looking at barriers to getting from, you know, northeast to, you know, Boise Elliott or to sites that are doing, uh, you know, summer acceleration programs. There is a real breakdown there, and I don't necessarily think it's the, you know, anyone's. I think you have to be real careful about blaming people, like it's their fault or their fault. Sometimes things just are the way they are, and the system has developed into what it is, and you need somebody to come in and look at it. It could be an outside, you know, it could be an outside consultant. It could be a new position to help figure that out and, and link those things together. And um, so I think that would be strategically, one way I'd be looking at those problems. Um, as far as um, infrastructure goes, I could talk all day about infrastructure and facilities. Um, we've, we've got a bond on the ballot, and I'm sure we're going to talk about it today, uh, one point eight three billion dollars. And um, hopefully when that bond passes, we really need to be focused on how that money is spent. That is definitely um, something I feel is extremely important that, you know, I would love to know, like, you know, what the competitive bidding process was. Are we giving, are we, are we giving our potential contractors a budget and saying, come back and tell you, tell us what you can do for this versus saying, here's what we need, come back with the money? There's a couple of different ways to do that, and I've been wondering if that's kind of why we're having a little disconnect between what other districts are building schools for and what we're, we're building them for. Like, how is that process different? Because my sense is that it's different. If we're lucky enough to have that bucket of money, I really want to focus on, with the high schools, we need to build the high schools, but how are we going to do it? What's the size going to be? Don't want to give up any, you know, facilities, but like, how can we be competitive enough in our process to make sure that we have a few hundred dollars, a few hundred dollars, a few hundred million dollars left over to address our elementary schools and middle schools? We can't wait ten more years to address these schools. We already have roofs, you know, collapsing at multiple schools a couple of years ago. Um, we, we didn't have a bond stakeholder advisory committee or group going in, which we've done for bonds in the past. It did not happen with this one. I would say on the flip side, except if we're fortunate enough to have this bond pass, we need to, we need to be doing that right afterward. We are pulling in real stakeholders in the community. Um, you know, architects, principals, parents, students, um, highly engaged people around PPS school. Get in a room like we used to do and hammer it out. And uh, and we made choices. And uh, you know, it was like, is Kellogg going to be in the bond or is it not going to be in the bond? If it's in the bond, we're going to have less for environmental health and safety, but what's the trade-off? Having those conversations, and I don't think it's too late. I think that we can have that conversation once we have the money. But that is something that I would say is, is critical to the execution of that money.
Your thoughts on the bond?
I'm supportive of the bond. Uh, like I said, with, after, you know, twelve years and seeing how everything has pretty much remained the same, I, you know, everything, I've looked at the bond, I've looked at everything on it with, um, you know, public, with, uh, with improvements of our buildings, and I agree with, you know, like having the need of modernizing our three remaining high schools. Uh, you know, like the Cleveland, Jefferson, and IBDW families have been waiting a very long time for those buildings to be modernized. Uh, I know Cleveland has also additionally been waiting for a very long time, um, especially what they're dealing with, um, with some turf and after-school programs too. Uh, but among just, uh, you know, modernizing our schools, which has, which is the big part of money in the bond, you know, there's also a lot of important work with the repair and maintenances of schools such as elementary and middle school. Um, you know, we have a lot of, I believe it's over thirty buildings that are very, very old, like in the nineteen thirties, around there, and around that range, um, that have been waiting, um, you know, from like what I've seen, like Virginia mentioned, uh, you know, buildings falling apart, mold, rats, um, a lot of issues that haven't been really addressed. And, you know, like, it's somewhat unfortunate that it's happening until now with this bond. Um, you know, it's something that should have been added in like several bonds before. Um, you know, we've had several bonds in the past, past couple of decades. And it's kind of seeing like how it wasn't until twenty twenty-five where they added, you know, like three high schools, money for elementary and middle schools, for public safety, extracurriculars, and so many other things all in just one.
That's actually not, not quite, not quite right. In twenty seventeen, which is the one I was just talking about, we did carve out a hundred and fifty million dollars for health and safety, and it was the first time that that had been done, where we addressed um, seismic issues, we addressed, you know, the lead pipes, the lead in the water, security upgrades, um, uh, fire sprinkler systems, all those things. That was actually the first time that that had been included. And um, and we did have Kellogg in there, but to your point about the middle schools and the elementary schools, um, if we can save, I don't want to be, I don't want to say save, because these numbers that were associated with high schools weren't necessarily, they feel like to me, when I'm reading everything, I'm like, how accurate were these really? We're not necessarily losing something because we don't even, uh, we need to see a competitive bid process. Um, but a hundred million dollars, two hundred million dollars, three hundred million dollars, that goes a long way in buildings so small. And um, if we can look at clusters holistically when we're executing the bond, like, you know, let's say, you know, I was reading the article where Tony Hobson and Ron Hunter were talking about Jefferson. You know, could you, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying this is, you know, what I, what I think we should do, you know, you, I don't have all the information. But let's say it was twelve hundred or thirteen hundred. Could you have that conversation at the same time, you're saying, you know what, and we're going to take that money, and for a couple of the schools that feed into Jefferson, we're going to make some significant upgrades to these schools so that they're more welcoming, and I always like to say that your school is rising up to meet you. Looking at it a little more holistically, so, you know, people don't want to feel like they're losing something. These communities absolutely deserve to have these schools. And, you know, Cleveland and Jefferson are in terrible shape. They're dangerous. They're environmental hazards. They absolutely have to happen. It's a, it's a non-negotiable for me. Um, but can we do it in a way, um, where we reach even more students? And maybe we start touching the elementary schools and middle schools in a more, um, uh, real visible way?
My clarification was that I'm saying that those changes with public safety and elementary school repairs are pretty recent in you could say some way, you know, twenty seventeen, yes, it was like eight years ago. Um, but, you know, that's pretty recent when it could have been added in previous bonds before. So that's kind of where I was getting at for the clarification part. Uh, but, you know, I agree with also, you know, like, uh, you forgot Wells on, into that conversation. Uh, you know, I know Wells, Jefferson, and Cleveland. I know a bunch of students that have told me a bunch of stories uh, in the past couple of years when I, I have the opportunity, you know, going to a very modernized school now at McDaniel. And, you know, I would talk to students, um, you know, Benson, my cousin goes there. I know people at Jefferson, Cleveland, and Wells that would tell me this like crazy stories where I'm like, that's not possible. Like, there's absolutely no way that's real. And they would then show me proof of like, here's a video, here is a photo of this like actually happening. Like, in one of our buildings, a part of the roof fell on a student, which was like, okay, like, that should be like an urgent priority. And, you know, like, in the twenty seventeen bond, we modernized our, you know, we modernized, was it three, three high schools?
Three, I said McDaniel.
Three high schools, and then one, and yeah, and then one in middle school. So, you know, we, we really modernized three high schools and didn't really, you know, prioritize those, you know, like really urgent schools that have been a big conversation for a lot of parents, you know, for elementary, middle school. Um, and then, you know, that conversation rose back up again in recent years, especially with the twenty twenty-three uh, teacher strike where they were, you know, bargaining for safer schools, class, uh, class gaps and all this. Uh, so, you know, I agree that, you know, um, definitely needs to be, you know, passage of the bond to make these changes, but also with accountability part, making sure that these things actually happen for like what voters are going to be voting for. You know, if they vote yes on this bond, they're approving one point three billion dollars to go through, go to all these things. And, you know, they expect for all this money to actually go into these things and actually see the results in the coming years. Like, you know, if the bond passes, like, like it has done in previous years, like folks are not going to see, um, like all of the changes in one year. You know, it's going to take like months, years, until like you see all the changes that you want to see. Uh, but you know, like with that part, uh, having, you know, like a school board member who is a true uh, community representative liaison, who, you know, communicate all those matters and, you know, be truth about like, hey, there is an issue with, uh, with, you know, in recent, we've had discussions about the Black Excellence Center, you know, funds about that. Like, you know, voters approved it because they wanted to see something like that, and yet there's nothing around that. And then there was conversations recently with the, um, with the Parent Indian Advisory Committee, where they wanted forty million dollars for a native center, and that didn't get on the bond. Uh, but, you know, like going back to the point, like if this bond passes, you know, we have to have a true board member who would actually be, you know, transparent and communicate to all those matters, as well as have, you know, other folks that are going to hold the school board, the district, the superintendent, and everyone really accountable, which is going to be that independent committee which states on the bond. You know, if the bond passes, an independent committee will be, um, will, will be created with parents, stakeholders, community groups, students, uh, really to make sure that those processes, you know, keep going on. And something that I would want to do is, you know, make sure that that happens as soon as the project begin, as soon as the bond passes, if it passes, all the way to the end of that bond, and ensure that they are meeting, you know, like all the time, making sure they're having the accurate information, you know, not making it look like we're getting information first and then they're getting it, but you know, making it.
Totally. Sorry, I want to actually just ask you another question.
No, you're good.
I want to go on like the, I want to keep on the bond, but I know I've seen both of you, you know, pretty regularly at school board meetings. If you were a school board member, what's one or two questions that you would have asked, you know, that maybe didn't come up? Or, um, you know, concerns that you might have had, or, you know, thoughts that you might have had about the bond um, during this process that, you know, you, you wished someone had raised? Um, we start with you, Jorge.
Think my concerns with the bond is one, again, going back to that huge amount, uh, which kind of goes back into that accountability part. Uh, you know, we, like, one point eight three is a huge number um, for schools. And, you know, a lot of the changes that we're doing to our high schools are kind of, some of the changes that we're doing are like first time, things that haven't really been done throughout the country and throughout other schools. And, you know, seeing like, I am so poised, will be supportive of bonds. Um, I think that now is where a lot of folks are concerned about on whether, you know, like, an almost really, you know, a bit of one point three billion dollar bond will pass. Um, you know, like, and kind of going back to my point, like, um, you know, making it more like equitable to where previous bonds are kind of, you know, focusing on those matters and then not just doing it all the way later and putting it all together. Um, I think kind of how it was structured, it was probably like the main concern to make sure like, parents, every, you know, every, uh, every group was a, um, was comfortable with how the bond was structured. Um, you know, when the board passed the bond and sent it to voter, or who are sending it to voters, you know, there were still concerns into that. I would want to go, if I created a bond as school member, to make sure that all of, everyone is like, okay, this is a great bond. We are supportive of it and everything like that. There's always going to be folks that are like, I don't know about it. Uh, but this year it seems like it's that number of like, I don't know, is a bit higher than it has been in previous bonds. Um, on specific questions, uh, really kind of looking at, um, really looking at like the analyzing part on like where we kind of got these, you know, like structures, like, okay, with public safety, um, with curriculum, with athletic facilities and everything like that, you know, we kind of got like a, um, good average and broader information about it, but like really going into like, okay, we, we received a lot of complaints about this part. We, and this is how much it, uh, an amount will cost for it, and then really going into like, um, really like the contractors and parts, because, you know, the district isn't going to be the one, like actually having folks do that. It's going to be through contracts and through other, um, organizations and groups. Uh, really focusing on that accountability and transparency issue were, um, would be my main questions that I would have wanted to do to make sure like, okay, how can we make this as supportive as possible? How can we make sure this is fully community? Okay, how can we make this as supportive as possible? How can we make sure this is fully community-led? And how can we make sure that we don't do this in future bonds, or we just add all of our issues into one bond? And then just keep doing that over and over again.
Great, thanks, Virginia. It's a great question, like what questions would I have asked? I think number one would have been, why was there not a bond stakeholder advisory group like there was in twenty seventeen? And I believe there was one in two thousand twelve too, um because we had all of this information hammered out going in. We actually wrote the referral as a group uh for the ballot.
When you say all this information, what do you mean?
Um we had, you know, final plans, we would be picked between the plans for the high schools. Um I remember being presented with, you know, two Lincoln options, and one was where, you know, they were relocated, and one was where they did exactly what they did, where they flipped it. Where they build while the students were on site, and switch the locations, thought that was brilliant. We had those, we had those options in the room. And um and we had, you know, different budgets for environmental health and safety. Um we knew all the buckets. And um and we're able to have a really robust conversation around it. And it was, like I said, there's a lot of people, there must have been thirty, at least thirty of us. Um meeting regularly um about this. So, um I love that process. Um I think it gave a lot of transparency, and a lot of these questions were answered going in. It was very clear like what, what was gonna be happening. Um that would be one question, and again, I still think that's something we can do on the backend now. Which, you know, if, if it passes, that would be like one of my like number one things, like let's get in a room and hammer this out. And then, gosh, another question, you know, um. I think a couple people have asked us, it's um, you know, obviously, you know, we need the curriculum, the curriculum's in the bond, but bonds are usually for capital expenditures. And um uh if maybe that could have been addressed differently. I think it's neither here nor there at this point. I don't think there's anywhere else we can pull the money from, which is unfortunate. So.
All right, interesting, the place where you might have a policy difference. Uh you're in favor of a all-day-in-a-way policy on cell phones, right?
I am.
Why?
Um I've had the, the, the experience of actually, I've got a student at Grant High School. So my son's a freshman, and um and I have a son who just graduated last spring. So I have seen the school with and without the policy, and um and I'm in there enough to see the difference. And um it is, the school's like a different place. Like when you rent it before, kids were, the hallways were quiet, kids are looking at their phones, they're in the bathrooms, you know, on, you know. There, there's, there's all sorts of issues. There's bullying, there's harassment. They're, they're not just phones, they're recording devices. That's what they are. They're recording devices, they're social media machines. Now when I go in there, it's like, it's loud. It's like, you know, I feel like it's like back when I went to school, like heads are up, students are talking. There's from, you know, the conversations I've been able to have, I'm on the site council as well, so I do hear from building administrators. The decrease in fights, um which is interesting. And I did a survey of our community and sent it in um during the public, you know, hearing and testified as well. But um what I heard from parents in comments and talking about their own students, some of them went in, you know, kicking and screaming. Like, this is a bad idea. I didn't know how I felt about it. The first thing I thought is like, how am I gonna reach my kid if I need to take him to a dentist appointment? You know, I had some trepidation as well. But seeing the execution, it's gone so flawlessly, and the feedback from the parents, and I sent all of it in. You know, I'd say it was like, I wanna say like it was eighty-two in favor, it could be almost eighty-something in favor, and you know, the other rest were opposed. But the comments from the kids, you know, my daughter is so much less anxious, she enjoys school so much more. You know, those things were repeated over and over and over. And so, hearing those comments, I think, from parents and students after it had been implemented. Um was really exciting. And so.
Jorge, how do you respond?
To, to her response or to the bond?
No, 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 to.
Alright, to the, to the cell phone policy?
To the cell phone policy.
Uh to the cell phone policy, I did, so once I first heard about the cell phone policy. I did a broad and a lot of uh engagement with students about how they felt about the policy. As we were the ones that were gonna be impacted the most about it, uh you know, teachers were in that, were also in the conversation. But there was, you know, an agreement where teachers wouldn't be the ones enforcing it, but it would be more our administrators. And so a lot of community, a lot of conversations that I had, um in which I helped with, you know, making sure that it was like a. You know, there was a survey out for students. Uh you know, there was a lot of students favored the, you know, the off and away. Uh only concerns about how it would work, and it was more for the high school than elementary, middle school. Uh you know, there were concerns about how it would work for students, for high schoolers that went off campus. Uh especially in neighborhoods at McDaniel, such as uh is one example, you know, on eighty-second. There's a lot of things that happen off, off eighty-second, and a lot of folks, oh, parents and guardians have a lot of, you know. Um you know, they see that there's conflicts around that policy, you know, they're supportive of like, okay, I don't want my kid being on the phone. But also, there's also safety issues along, you know, when there's prostitution and drugs, homelessness. Uh especially when we live in a society where school shootings are very common in our country. Uh and, you know, social media uh does have its pros and cons, but has been a tool um used in incidents like these. In public safety matters where they communicate with students like, hey, there's something going, going, uh there's something happening at the McDonald's near our school. Or, hey, there's a fight outside, or, you know, eh, god, if there's like a situation where there's a school shooter inside a building, you know, there's communication. So, you know, there were concerns about that, um as well as, you know, during passing period. And this is where I talked to administrators, you know, they had told me like, okay, if we, if the district did pass an off-and-away um policy, like. You know, how is that going to be enforced, you know? Uh they're really the clear, clear, clear solution was, you know, yonder patches, which um which have some difficulties. With a lot of students, which, you know, data shows that a lot of students have put fake phones into it, um and use their actual phone. So they don't, you know, kind of as a way to use like, oh, I'm like not on my phone, but you know, they have it in their backpack when they go to the bathroom. Or when they go off campus, you know, they use their phones, um which, you know, in some way is a hat, is a waste of, you know, funds. Uh but you know, there are, you know, alternative ways to find like, you know, common ground with students on like, okay, how do you keep it away during class time? But also how do you like, make sure like for safety reasons to, if it's into that? And that is something that I did work with um at the city legislature right now. Currently, there's a bill um in the senate which passed to the house. Uh which is on its way to the house right now. Uh or it's, wasn't the house, now it's on the way to the senate. I was like, other way around. Um where there, how it was first drafted was that it's exactly like the PPS policy. Except there were additional things to it, um where if you were at a sporting event, if you were on a bus stop, really like crazy parts. Were like, okay, I don't know how in general that's ever gonna be possible, um especially like, you know, when you're at a bus stop, like, how are you kind of really gonna determine that? And so I hope I gave feedback as a advisor to the state Board of Education. Uh to the sponsors about like, hey, I think if you did an amendment to this proposed bill, I think folks would be more in favor of it. If it was um less restricting. Uh so it's still like, you know, off and away during all of school time, passing period, and lunch. Um and you know, I, right now I'm trying to fight for adding funding to the bill. Um you know, there's a bunch of state mandates that go into this where they don't include funding for it, and it's left to the school districts to find funds to. You know, for this type of reason, you know, for like PPS, Salem County, school districts like that, you know, it's gonna cost a lot of money to find like ways. Like, okay, if we're gonna do yonder, that's like thirty bucks a piece. If we're gonna do something else, you know, it's costing a lot of money. So that's currently what I'm working on right now.
Hmm. And then on the state legislature now, I'd love to segue into kind of the bigger topic in education, this psychology has been kind of increased school funding versus. You know, increased accountability, perfect, you know, package of bills. I would love to just hear where you guys both feel that you fall in terms of that, like striking that balance. And um you know, also just what you, you know, what you would expect a district to, like, how, how accountable you'd expect a district to be for the funds that they receive? If at all, and you know what that relationship is basically, so.
Well, you know, I, obviously, you know, we all support, you know, funding the full Q E M. I think um, you know, the situation we were in, we were talking about it in early January, is a lot different than the situation that we're in now. Um with everything that's happening with, you know, federal funds. Um I'm nervous, I'm not gonna lie. Um I absolutely want us to fund, you know, with every, you know, everything we have in our bodies to get that full Q E M. But I also think that we need to be thinking as a district, how to make every dollar that we have right now go farther. And that's kind of what I was trying to touch on earlier in terms of, you know, strategic leads, you know, within the central office, about how we can make every dollar go farther.
Um, do you think that's possible right now? Like, you know, where's, i- is there a dollar right now that's not going kind of like different, it can be stretched?
You know, it's hard to tell when we're not, we're not on the inside. And um I just think it's something we definitely have to look at. You know, when I hear stories about, you know, transportation being billed to, you know, early literacy grants. And understanding why that is, because, you know, the certain grants are tied to certain locations, certain school locations, certain grants can be used everywhere. So if you combine the money, you're stuck still with certain locations. It, it's just, it's a hot mess as far as that piece goes. And um and it's gonna take some more high-level strategic thinking to figure it out. Um but, yeah, I mean, this is a, this is a, this is how I would, like, think of a question like this, I would say like, here's how I would look at the problem. Like, what do we have for sure? How are we being most efficient with what we have? And then what are we fighting for? We're gonna have to be able to walk and chew, chew gum at the same time, because we don't know what's gonna happen. And that's really difficult to, you know, right now, um the department that's making uh the decisions about all of the early literacy grants. You know, they're not even gonna know how much money they have until May. It's too late. They have seven thousand students that qualify for their program. They're gonna be able to serve seven hundred and fifty. And the students that are getting cut in all of this process, they are the, they're the middle school students. And the students that are three through five, they're the students who came through um with balanced literacy. And now we have to switch to um, you know, um science-based, you know, reading, which I am a adamant supporter of. But what's gonna happen to all of these kids in the middle? Right now, there's a big giant hole that's happening. And if we don't get the money in May, and then we don't get any increase in the Q E M or feed small, these kids are still gonna fall through the cracks. And it's like every single year, you know, it's just, next thing you know, we're missing like another generation of kids that can't read. And if you can't read, you can't learn. Why would you come to school? I mean, how frustrating would that be as a kid? To be that far behind and expected to come to school every day and, you know. Participate and be as successful as you can be. It's, it's devastating.
Yeah, Jorge, same kind of question. I mean, do you feel like the district is, you know, really utilizing every single dollar? Do you feel like there might be, you know, blow anywhere? And then simultaneously, how do you strike that funding accountability balance?
Yeah, so I think every, you know, every student, parent, educator right now is nervous and stressed. On what's going to happen at the federal level. And at a district level like PPS, uh you know, with a forty million shortfall. There's gonna be, you know, a lot of hard decisions. And I think, you know, one of the first acts that I would wanna do as a school board member. Is, you know, look into, looking at every piece of dollar that's going into school, central office, staff, et cetera. Um and then really looking at, okay, we're spending this amount of much on this, and like looking at the breakdown of it, you know, like. Right now, you could look at like, okay, the approved budget and like what department it's going to, but like actually looking at the breakdowns of every single one of them and seeing like, okay. Look at this and then look at that. Uh but also looking at the needs versus wants, you know, there's definitely, like right now, we need to focus more of, of our needs. Than are the things that we want in our, in our district right now. Um you know, there's.
Can you kind of give an example of what a need is and what a want?
I think some of the needs right now is looking uh based on what um our kind of projections are right now. So when we look at our test scores, when we look at chronic absenteeism, um you know, those are kind of needs right now. You know, looking at programs and athletics that we have are, you know, also, also needs too. Um that we see, but I sort of kind of see that as more of a want. And from there, you know, we don't wanna see those get cut too. But there's also a lot of different types of collaborations that we can do with community partners and local groups to see like, okay, how do we like? Our funds kind of have to go more into, like this is an example, like, hey, our funds have to go more into like early literacy. Cause we're seeing like a big hole and drop on this matter, and then we're seeing a lot of attendance issues, and then we're seeing a bunch of infrastructure issues. So we can't really, you know, fund this athletic facility, or hey, this like one-day-after-school program. Like, hey, can you help us or help us in some type of way with that? Like, that right there is like some collaboration that we wanna work with, you know, making sure. Cause like, this isn't just PPS going through this issue, like it's districts across the whole state that are dealing with this right now with a shortfall. We had test scores with um with uh chronic absenteeism, like there's a bunch of issues that everyone is dealing with. And it's nice that if we can all work together in a collaborative way to do these issues, and then go to a nonprofit, or go to the state. Or go to the city about like, hey, we're all dealing with this issue. Is there any way that you could help us and find an alternative way to fund these things? Cause hey, it's a community, like again, all this district educators, unions, parents, and students come together like, hey. We know that this district has to, has to fund these things other than this, and we really appreciate this, and we really like this. Like, I'm in an after-school program. And like, I hate for that to get cut, but then I also understand like, hey, I would, I would understand if the district has to cut. This after-school program for all the students to get lunch. Like, I understand that part.
Can I, yeah, can I respond? So I have to say that I, I do disagree, um particularly at the high school level when it comes to um. Extracurriculars and things like the athletic facilities. Those are part of um the school facilities. And we've got a long-range facility plan that incorporates, you know, the hubs, you know, at Jackson, potentially at Whitaker, um out at Marshall. And those facilities, the, the extracurricular piece of high school is really important. I'm talking about the arts too, which I, I saw that that was in the bond too, I'm not sure what the detail is on that. Um I've co-founded Friends of Grant Music to help fund those programs as well. They're equally important. Because they keep kids engaged at school who might not otherwise be engaged. I think the, our track program is a great example. We've got two hundred and fifty kids, that's like almost ten percent of the entire student body. Their participation is tied to attendance. And what we've seen is the kids who are struggling and that are less likely to come to school are showing up. So that sense of community and engagement is so important, important at the high school level. Cause those kids are deciding whether or not they're gonna come. It's not like somebody who, you know, a child that's in elementary school or, you know, potentially middle school. Getting themselves to school today, you don't know where, where they're going when they walk out the door. So we found that that's a very, very effective tool, so I do believe that that is important. Um to your point though, what you're talking about with, you know, partnerships um to address, um you know, programs for, let's say, you know. Summer learning or um, you know, high-dose tutoring. Actually, I had a conversation um with uh PPS the other day. Asking about, you know, the situation we have Parks and Rec, how they're talking about closing the community centers in um Peninsula and St. John's. Which is, I, I also, I didn't mention, I've, I've been here for twenty years, and I spent the first part of my life in Portland, living in North Portland. So I know all about the disparities between the two, I have lived them firsthand. And that is a complete disaster for that area. But if there is a stra- and this is like a strategy, where you've gotta have, you know, somebody in the room that's taking the lead, and this is what we talked about. Is there a way to start thinking about working together as a district and as Parks and Rec during the summer? Because we both have programs, we both have facilities. How can we build a program to serve these kids? Bring our financial resources together and turn these into full-day programs for parents? Because you've got parents who can drop their kids off in the morning, hopefully, or we can provide transportation service, but they really need to be there all day. Right now, those programs are from, I wanna say it's like maybe nine, eight or nine, to one o'clock in the afternoon. But what happens to those kids after one o'clock? They can't get anywhere. If there's a Parks program, and my son works for Parks and Rec as well, or in the summers. You know, can we turn that into a full-day program, a collaborative program between PPS and Parks? These are the big picture conversations that we need to be having, and that's gonna take a year to plan, but um.
Um Jorge, do you have any?
Yeah, no, I was just gonna say like, I mean, collaboration and partnerships are gonna be a key thing. You know, we have a lot of after-school programs, ERCO, SEI, Latino Network. And you know, those folks, without them, we would see a lot of issues in our schools right now if we, if it wasn't for those, um for those after-school programs. And it's why, like, for looking at those like after-school programs, or during summer, or during like winter break or spring break. Those during, during those times, you know, those groups really come in to, come in um to support us. Cause we know, they know that like PPS or the school district can't afford to do all this. And it's why I, with, you know, at the state level, with my advocacy that I've been doing uh as a, as a member of the state board of ed. Uh but as well as uh doing a lot of work at the legislature for funding, I've been able to help pass a bunch of bills going to early literacy. Summer learning, tribal literacy, um a lot of money in the millions of dollars uh to really like fund these things. Cause I know like, okay, school districts don't have enough money for this particular matter, and then they. school districts don't have enough money for this particular matter, and then they have to move that money into this need, because they see that this is a more needed thing based on community input, you know? Like, really looking at the needs or wants are really gonna be based on community feedback, and that's really what I wanna go, go forward into. So, like, you know, if community feedback are saying like, hey, we are more into our building infrastructure more than athletics, like, okay, that's the needs of the community, like, going from there. If they say the opposite way, then it's gonna go to that way. I mean, you know, really looking at the community input and looking at like, okay, what do we need, uh, what do we need to do? And then looking at steps into it, like, looking at the bigger picture, you know, like, okay, if they want my money for that, uh, but yeah.
Yeah. Um, I know you have PAT's endorsement, can you just share a brief time or, or, you know, a position where maybe you differ from the union stance?
I think where we differed a lot, uh, or not a lot, I think, uh, one difference that we, that me and PAT have is during the, his, during the teacher's strike. So, during the teacher's strike in twenty twenty-three, I was an organizer and a liaison, a student liaison during the, during the strike, uh, where I led thousands of students, uh, to, you know, get involved in their local schools, to, you know, uh, picket and march with their, with their fellow teachers, uh, and really be like key communication to students like, hey, uh, this is why teachers are striking, this is like the whole reason why they're doing this, et cetera, really so they're aware. Um, as you know, like, we want you to be at the table, and it's, you know, why I'm ready to, you know, bring that representation. Um, and during that whole month of November, you know, it was an insane month, you know? It was, uh, Monday through Friday, and it was like eight AM all the way up to eight PM for me. Um, it was a hu, a lo, a crazy day with a lot of things happening. Uh, and one of the things, uh, was during bargaining was about student, student needs. So, you know, when we see unions, uh, they, you know, they focus more on their workers and their like needs on that. Um, and one of the things that I try to really do for them, um, something that I try to collab with them a lot about is like, hey, um, we should also focus on a lot of the student needs that they, that our investment needs. So, you know, with the, uh, with the process of suspension and restorative justice, with class caps, which was a big conversation, um, which is one of the key things that they went into and left, um, when bargaining ended. Uh, you know, like, what I had told them a lot is like, a lot of the teacher issues are similar to student issues. You know, like, if teachers are struggling with something, students are gonna be struggling with something too. And so, I try to really, uh, bring that big picture to them, and they, you know, they understood that, um, too, but, you know, their, uh, you know, our educators and, and those classified, and those staff had to, you know, were more of the priority for them, and that's, you know, their job. Um, and my job was to do that part that I was trying to get them to advocate on, and so that was really the main difference between us both.
And then, Virginia, what's our endorsement that you are the proudest of?
Oh, Stanford Children, no question. Uh, because I think that their work around, um, you know, K through three, um, early learning and the grant programs, and Measure Money Eight, and all those things they've worked towards, that they got a direct impact on PPS students and schools, like, that money is, is just, um, it's fundamental to the success of those programs.
Can you point us to a place where you and Stanford Children differ on something?
Um, honestly, no, I can't, and I've turned it inside out, like, we are on the same page, pretty much a hundred percent of the time. We really value their work. And I did, can I just ask one question? Just, I just wanted to ask, for, for the student representative on the board, it's my understanding that there's actually a committee, that there's a representative from each high school, and then we have the student advisor to the board that represents that group, correct? It's not one voice, it's a voice of, that's represented.
TJ kind of gets like a symbolic.
So, there is a advisory group, yes, um, but his role according to the bylaws is that his job is to represent all of the students.
Right, but I'm just, I'm just thinking like, there, there is a group that finds that out, right?
Yeah, but I think his role is also a little independent, yeah. Do you?
Fun question time.
Fun question time. What was your favorite childhood snack?
Oh, wow. You go first, because I'm gonna, I'm gonna think a little farther back.
Uh, childhood snack, I wanna say my mom always, trying to remember, it was the potato lace chips. Um, it was a red version, not the yellow one.
Nice.
Um, and she.
Did it have a flavor like a specific?
I don't know if it's a flavor, but like, it was always, it was always the red bag that she would, that she would always, that she would always buy. And she would always put like ketchup on it, and like, it was just always a like, kinda go-to snack, but also just always a snack that she would always make for me whenever I was ever hungry, and she still does sometimes. Uh, so that was my, probably the, yeah, the main snack that I remember.
I would say my mom's, uh, oatmeal raisin cookies, when she took the raisins out, which I hate, and put chocolate chips in.
So, they would be chocolate.
Every once in a while, she would just give me the gift of not putting the raisins in the recipe. And, uh, yeah.
All right. Thank you so much, both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia, and we will release our issue on April thirtieth with balance at the same day, I think.